Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Are you listening? Good, you nod your head, thumbs up or whatever. First of all, I want to thank you for attending this special meeting. And I wish a very good afternoon to all my fellow councillors and to the officers of Invercloy Council. This meeting is not open to members of the public, but the reports, in the interest of transparency, the reports are available on the council website. And the minute of this meeting will be submitted to the next full meeting of Invercloy Council, which is this month. On the 28th of August, Scottish ministers drew up regulations which give local authorities new powers. The sole business of today's meeting is to delegate the new powers to named officers of the council. These new powers are designed to enhance the ability of this council to respond to a serious and imminent threat to the public health of our people here in Invercloy. Obviously, this threat to public health is that caused by Covid. I want to read it to one or two instructions which may make the easier go more smoothly. If you want to speak, do type question or comment in your chat box, selecting everyone in your drop down menu, and I will call on you to speak. Now, I think you're all fairly familiar with that procedure, so what it should be like, second or third or fourth nature to you. If there are members who are accessing the meeting by telephone, Jim, they do not have the chat box function, so I will invite them to speak first, and thereafter, they will need to ask to speak. Please have your microphone on mute unless you are called to speak. With that, I hand the meeting over to Gerard Malone. Gerard?
Thank you, Provost. Good afternoon, members. Thank you, Provost, for convening this single item meeting of the council. As you have said in your introduction, Scottish ministers approved these urgent powers following them being laid in Parliament just two weeks ago. They were approved using the powers of urgency on the 28th of August, as you have said. And it is equally reflecting the importance of this, that this meeting has been convened through yourself, Provost. These are new regulations giving the authority new powers. The powers to give directions are granted to the council, to the local authority, and it is necessary for this local authority and equally our colleague local authorities to consider how to appropriately delegate those powers to officers to ensure that they may be used timiously. If the powers are needed, it's almost certainly the case, Provost, that the powers will be required very quickly in response to either an outbreak or intelligence about an intended event that could give rise to concerns in terms of the public health restrictions and the incidence of coronavirus. Regulations give new powers to local authorities in respect of specified premises, in respect of events, and in respect of public outdoor places, all of which are relevant for this council. In terms of specified premises, Provost, there is no restriction in the regulations as to what the premises are, in terms of specified premises. We are awaiting, as officers, guidance, that's been promised from the Scottish government, and guidance is expected imminently as to the actual implementation and use of these new powers. But to advise the council, specified premises relate to any form of premises that has a postal address. I would be suggesting that it refers mostly to premises within commercial or public domain. It can certainly apply, according to regulations, to residential premises, but perhaps that's not the entire real purpose or thrust of the regulations. The regulations apply to the holding of events, and authorities can impose necessary, when they are necessary, restrictions in terms of access to numbers, timing of access to public outdoor places, very important for this council, when you think about our parks, when you think about, for example, the very popular places of resort also, like Lunderston, like Cornelies. There are requirements, Provost, that must be fulfilled, and that is in terms of the requirements to satisfy the officer or the council as to the public health risk. There are requirements and details in terms of upon whom directions would be served, and there can be restrictions or prohibitions on a range of factors, such as the actual facilities within premises, the numbers of persons within premises, and the times that the direction might actually apply. There is an appeal to the sheriff in respect of any directions. There are offences created by the failure of specified persons upon whom directions have been given, who fail to observe the terms of directions. Officers within environmental health public protection, who have certain powers already, are requested to have additional powers to enforce these directions. The directions also give police constables certain rights to issue fixed penalty notices when a direction has been served and when, in their opinion, it is not being observed in terms of any detail. Provost, that's probably what I could comment on in terms of the actual import of the directions. There are perhaps just two further matters that I would bring to the council's attention. There are obviously notice requirements, and they would have to be given to businesses or owners or occupiers of premises that are affected. But there's also a requirement that the direction be publicised, specifically publicised, on the council's website for purposes of publicity. There's a requirement that neighbouring authorities also be advised of the making of directions. I'm taking up the council's time in this regard, Provost, just to emphasise the importance and the cross-authority impact of making directions and how important these issues are. So there would be notice on the website, and there would also be intimation to neighbouring authorities. I will conclude, Provost, by saying that the Scottish ministers themselves may, in terms of these directions, direct that, the council issue a direction, and that is an important issue to note also. Provost, I will, of course, answer any questions. I hope I've given a brief outline of the import of the directions affecting specified places, events, and public outdoor places.
Thank you very much, Gerard. I'll invite questions to Gerard in just a moment. In the interim, I must confess, I've been missed, and I must be punished for it, but I have not sought apologies from councillors or declarations of interest. I have already received apologies from councillor Chris McAlain. Do any other councillors have declarations of interest, or are there any further apologies, Sean?
No further apologies have been received, and I don't have any declarations of interest.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean. So then we can proceed to questions. Councillor McLeod is on the phone. Jim, could you form in your question?
Not at this point, Provost, not at this moment.
Let's see. Does any other councillor have a question for Mr Malone? I understand that councillor Robertson has a question. Elizabeth?
Thanks, Provost. I know that councillor McVeigh got in before me. Is everybody happy with me going ahead?
He's very happy.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I think, obviously, this is such an important paper that's before us, that we are being asked as a council to take extraordinary measures where they're needed, and it's clear that we should be delegating these to our officers when they are necessary to put into place. However, in addition to the points that Gerard has already mentioned in terms of the requirements on the website, and also to notify the authorities, I was wondering if we could possibly make an additional recommendation at the end of the paper that asks that if we use any of the powers, that this would be indicated to us as members, either by communication with the group leaders of the council or via our established Covid updates, and that then, in addition to that, any use of the powers would be reported for noting to the relevant subsequent meeting of the council, just as a matter of record, and only for noting, so that we have a synthesised permanent record of the times that these particular powers are used. I understand that there are lots of delegated powers that are in use every day in the council, and I'm not asking for that for these, but I think this is an unusual piece of legislation for a particular time in our history that is beyond everybody's control, and it's not the same as the other delegated powers that we've already disposed.
Gerard, can you answer Elizabeth's question?
Yes, Provost, it is, of course, possible to do that, either in terms of Covid update or in a report back to the subsequent meeting of the council, and that's an entirely appropriate request if the council wishes to instruct that.
Thanks, Provost. Provost, just a question maybe for Mr McNab regarding the people queuing up outside premises. It was raised at the licensing board recently, and I'm just wondering if this legislation covers that?
Through you, Provost. Potentially, yes, albeit I think we've probably got other tools to deal with that kind of issue. I would foresee these powers only being used if we had, for example, an outbreak or an incident, and there was a requirement to either close somewhere that had been the seat of infection, and we were not getting cooperation from the business or premises, or if there was significant intelligence, whether that came through Scotland or otherwise, of a planned event that we couldn't necessarily control otherwise. So I think we've probably got more appropriate tools to deal with issues of queuing, and certainly councillor McVeigh wants to come back to me, I'm happy to get both our EHOs or LSOs out to deal with any premises where this is going on.
You're quite happy with that response?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Provost.
The next councillor who's in the chat box is councillor Deki.
One I wonder, it seemed to be a big problem, was that people don't seem to know how many customers are allowed in. We'll say to the hospitality side, some are saying it's at one metre, and they don't realise because they haven't got the stuff there. As premises have been told, the maximum they can get in, either at two metres or at one metre provided of all that equipment, because that's a big concern with this virus. And thank God today they use the word mandatory. They cut to how we have suffered by just getting something. It's told, don't do this, and these people seem, well, I can do it. And that seems to be a big one. And I hope this is a lesson for us all to keep working together for this. And I'm talking about businesses as well, because it seems to happen elsewhere in Scotland, and I'm glad at this time we are not at the forefront of this. So I just wonder if you could tell me that, first of all, and who's going to implement it? Because up till now, it seemed to be, wasn't it the environmental, and it wasn't anybody that was going through. Now, we'll at least get officers, it's going to be told, that's your remit. Thank God for that, at least they know where this is done. I just wonder. Thanks.
So, going to be helpful, Provost. I think, as I say, we have visited all of the licensed premises that have opened on more than one occasion. They all have to, if you're using a kind of one metre, as councillor Deki will be aware, you have to actually have mitigating measures in place roundabout how people are treated, taking the details which is now part of law and previously wasn't. You have to have these mitigations in place to go from the two metres to the one metre. And in terms of actual capacity, that should be in the kind of operating plans of the premises and their risk assessments. But again, if there are any premises that are causing concern, we are more than happy to actually get our officers to visit them afresh, as I said, but we have visited a number both during the day and on Friday, Saturday nights as well, when they have been busy. And by and large, I think, I would have to say that the response has been quite positive.
Thank you, Martin. Does that satisfy you, General?
Yeah, I'm quite happy with what the officers are doing, but I know, I'm talking from the other side, people are telling me what's happening elsewhere, even with doing the toilets and everything else. Today, thank heavens, they've made things mandatory, what they're going to have to do, so there'll be nobody sitting halfway doing what they're doing. It's going to start, we have to wear masks if you're working, and that's it. But seriously, you've got to work at this and make sure that they understand it in a way that goes, don't do it because it could affect everybody else, and that's the big concern. Thanks, Provost. Thanks, Martin.
General, there's unanimity there. Does any other, does any other member of our council, councillor Murphy? Natasha?
Thank you, Provost. Yes, I understand what people have been saying about the pubs and making sure that people aren't queuing outside, but I think we need to be mindful of like schools and shops and restaurants as well, because these are all places that are hotspots for people getting a bit too close to each other when waiting to either pick up children or going to eat or buy things. I think we're getting a bit off topic. I think what councillor Robertson suggested is a really good idea of having an update sent out to us by email and then having that in the next council. But I was just wondering, can I just confirm, Gerry, that you said this applies to not just businesses, but also to residential issues as well? So if there was, for example, a premises that was having three or more households in regularly, would that apply to them too?
Provost, the regulations and the directions that Martin and I are discussing pending the Scottish government guidance, do not apply to a house party as a one-off in a domestic dwelling. If, however, there were repeat issues or substantial gatherings, the regulations as they are written certainly bear support that a residential intervention could be used, because if that were the case, the issue is that the domestic dwelling is giving rise to regular gatherings causing concern, either in terms of the incidence of Covid or the general public health restrictions. So I do think the guidance will come forward and say that it is intended mostly for those properties, as I said earlier, in the public domain. I think it may clarify the exact form of its use in terms of domestic dwellings, but given that question's been somewhat preempted, if I may say, Provost, through to councillor Murphy with Martin and myself, we both think that the regulations can apply to domestic dwellings. We would seek not to, very much in the spirit of Martin's previous answer, not to have recourse to the direction in that regard, because there are already existing powers that Martin's public protection team have. But if need be, if need be for that restricted question, that nature of circumstance from councillor Murphy, I think that the direction could be given in the situation that would be merited by repeat or substantial numbers. It could also be used, if not necessarily for specified premises, but possibly also in relation to the restrictions on events, because the events need not be organised as such, they could be the equivalent of repeat house parties. So I wouldn't want to say to any members that it's focused on domestic dwellings antisocial behaviour, like, I would say that's part of the existing powers, but there will be guidance that comes forward that perhaps clarifies its exact relevance to domestic dwellings. I hope that answers, to the best of my ability, certainly, but that answers councillor Murphy's question.
Natasha, does that answer your question? The further guidance is in the pipeline?
Thank you, Provost. Yes, thanks very much for that, Gerry. I suppose the reason why I was asking that is because, obviously, at the moment, they're saying that one of the main causes of rises in Covid is because of households meeting together with too many people, and obviously we've got new guidance, and I'm aware that pubs, clubs, well, not really clubs, pubs and restaurants, probably also has to do with that. I appreciate the insight that you've given us today, so thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. Councillor Wilson?
Yes, thank you very much. Could I just ask Gerard a question while we've got you here? I know that we've had to bring in different regulation. This meeting is not open for the public to observe, neither are any of our committee meetings. I've already asked about planning. When do you think, for the sake of scrutiny and openness and transparency, we'll get back to being able to allow the public to observe these meetings by some technical possibility?
Thank you, Provost. Thank you, councillor Wilson, for that question. The press, of course, we have made space in terms of our meetings to request press representatives and to facilitate that if they are required, and the press has been attending a number of our committee meetings. I don't think that the external press are represented today. We're also recording, as Provost has said, all of our meetings. Provost, at the full council on the 24th of September, you will be considering, as a council, the remit that the council gave me to report back to the 24th of September meeting itself on the experiences and views of elected members on the use of the WebEx video conferencing platform. I'm very obliged to the vast majority of members who've fed back to me already in terms of their responses. Provost, I have completed a report that was considered this morning at the corporate management team, and is in the process for consideration and issue to the full council on the 24th of September. In that report, which has not, of course, gone through the full committee process, the full process before it comes to the council meeting, I am suggesting that there are a number of options relative to the publicity and the availability of recordings out of all our committee meetings, including, especially including, those meetings to which councillor Wilson refers, and I'm referring to those quasi judicial tribunals, the judicial tribunals, where there's no right or entitlement of persons to make representations. They are the very ones that members of the public applicants are very keen to see how their applications are dealt with. They're somewhat separate from the general purposes board, for example, in terms of the likes of different types of applications, taxi driver applications, but for planning and local review body, I've included those recommendations within the report, which is in hand for consideration on the 24th of September meeting of the council, and members will be able to decide upon that at that time.
Thank you, Provost. Thank you, Gerard.
Right, David, thank you. Can I ask councillors if they have a question to use this chat facility? It's a bit of a nuisance, but it enables myself and Diane to call on councillors in the correct sequence and ensure that no one is left out. Councillor Lynn, councillor Quinn?
Yeah, thanks, Provost. I don't know, I've just put my question in there, but I think we've reached, I think it was just making sure that that was in as part of the recommendation and not just a verbal update, but I think we're okay with that, that it won't be our recommendation about advising the elected members when the powers are used.
So, do you have a question, Lynn? Do you have a question?
Yeah, so I think it's just for Mr Malone to confirm, it'll definitely be in the recommendations, that elected members won't be advised when the powers are used, if not be.
That would be a motion, wouldn't it?
No, I think it's Liz's point earlier, so Liz has made the point to ask to make sure that elected members are updated if the powers are used, so I'm just confirming that that will be changed as part of the recommendations.
Okay, I'll pass that over to Gerard. Gerard?
Yes, Provost, if that's the decision of the council, I have councillor Robertson's proposal, is that if the powers are utilised, that there is a report, either as part of the Covid update or in writing to the next relevant subsequent meeting of the council. I understand that councillor Robertson referred to the political group leaders, but if councillor Robertson would accept my wording, that would perhaps address councillor Robertson's point, if councillor Robertson could be kind enough to confirm.
Councillor Robertson is nodding vigorously. She also raised a thumb. Ronnie, councillor Hallfield?
Thanks, Provost. I think the question's great, self-explanatory, and it's really for Gerry or Martin. You know, isolation is practiced, still permitted. I mean, I did hear the First Minister's broadcast at lunchtime, where we reduced the number from eight to six in two families, but I just wondered, I didn't hear it all, I just wondered if the regulations had been amended or changed in any shape or form.
Gerard?
Provost, and if I would certainly welcome Martin's assistance in this. Could I answer on this basis? Gatherings are not permitted. Gatherings, to my understanding, are clearly in phase four of the Scottish government's roadmap through the crisis. Phase four has not been arrived at, that today's announcement does not permit gatherings, thereby outside events, as referred to in the chat function, they are not permitted according to the actual rules about gatherings. Gatherings are not permitted, except subject to those family, household attendances that are permitted. The powers that are in front of the council here just now don't really affect that, but if there were an event that did give rise to a public health restriction, coronavirus here, then that's when the powers would come into effect, and that's why they could be very timously and very quickly used in order to intercept any event that is not otherwise lawful. Provost, I would very much welcome Martin's feed on the response, please.
So, through you, Provost. Where new guidance or new state from the First Minister of the day did include a couple of exemptions to the sex or more, and where specifically for, I think, funerals and wakes, where the numbers were raised to, I think it's 20, and there was a further exemption for organised sporting events, because technically, I suppose, a sports team could be seen as a gathering, so that has not been captured. I am not clear, and I will have to maybe come back to you on implications for maybe some of the outside events, like, shall we say, things along the lines of the kind of drive-in cinema things, I think there was an opera down at the Custom House Key, unfortunately, I was on holiday, so I missed it, last Friday. I'm not sure about the implications for that, I don't think those are intended to be captured by this. I think gatherings are where people are close together and mixing freely, so I think it needs a wee bit more clarity, and I'm sure the Scottish government guidance will be updated to reflect some of those changes.
Ronnie, Martin will avert to you on one or two details. Does that, have you had satisfactory answers to your question?
Thanks, Provost. I have, and I look forward to getting some clarification from Martin and Gerry. I mean, basically, what triggered off the question in my mind, Martin has referred to, and that is the fact that it looked as though there was some kind of outside opera on the steps of the beacon at the weekend. So, was it advertised, you know, were they expecting people to be there? Did they socially isolate if they were there? And so I think we really do need some clarification on that one, because frankly, right now, I don't think it's very clear, but thanks for that.
Martin will avert to you and will give you further details, and that's Ronnie. I think this is, that was the outcome of the question. Colin, councillor Jackson?
Yeah, thanks, Martin. My question's to Mr Malone, and I kind of follow along from that, but I think he's maybe just answered it when Mr Malone said they're going to intersect events. It was lovely to ask if these directions are going to be proactive or whether they're going to be reactive to public complaints of, you know, breach of social distancing. That was another question. That was one of the questions.
Provost, Provost, I think that the situations will be very often in terms of both. Most importantly, proactive. If we are receiving intelligence about this, we can now, using this, it's another tool within the toolbox. There are other powers that are available, but this gives us a very clear power to prohibit certain things, to be focused in terms of premises or in terms of events, to actually impose restrictions on numbers or on facilities within premises. There's a great degree of proactivity in that regard. It allows us to react to any intelligence that we are receiving in the widest sense about premises, events or outdoor places. But I have to also say that there is also a certain reactive nature to that as well in that if something is happening, we are then able to, using the directions and provided they are satisfied, address those issues on the basis of that it has happened and we're stopping it for the future. The directions can only individually apply for a period of 21 days as a maximum. They have to be reviewed every seven days as an absolute requirement. So you can see the sort of the urgent focus, the proactivity, that sort of part of that type of setup and the procedure. It's there to basically crack a nut to actually sort out the problem. But I have to say, there will be situations whereby, and I hope that our use of this need not be prolific, I really do hope. But there will be situations whereby we will be reacting to things that have happened just as much as we have perhaps proactively taken steps to use our intelligence sources to prevent it.
Thank you Gerry. Are you happy with that Colin?
Yes Martin, that is reassuring to know we're going to be taking more of proactive approach. So thanks.
Natasha? Councillor Murphy? I thought we had a question from councillor Murphy. Which appeared in the chat box.
Provost, I can assist, I can see that question if that assists you Provost and assists councillor Murphy. The question is, does it apply to social football, friends playing at the Battery? I do think that that's part of the clarification that councillor Alfield, myself and Martin will have to address. Because again, subject to any announcements that have been made today by the First Minister, my understanding is that you can't have that, but Martin did touch upon the fact that you can have, you know, a family gathering or a number of families gathered for a social purpose. But beyond that, it's not allowed. The idea of having a game of football, I do not think has yet been permitted. And I think Martin reflected on that earlier.
Do you wish to speak Martin? Martin? No? You're muted? That's it. No, you're muted again.
Ah, managed that time. Sorry about that. Apologies. You'd think we'd be good at that by this time. I think there's a few things that we need clarity on. As I think I said, that the the organised sport was specifically excluded, but we need to actually work out how that would apply to kind of social football. Now certainly, I'm aware that the the gatherings or the new restrictions certainly do not apply to the likes of children's football training etc. So I think if you're happy, we'll check out exactly the implications of that and the implications for any events at the likes of the Gurkirk Amphitheatre, similar to the event at the beacon. My understanding is that those aren't intended to be captured by the change. But I think if members are happy, we'll do a quick pressy of the changes and circulate those around members tomorrow if that's satisfactory.
Thank you. Councillor Alfield, Ronnie, you're seeking clarification.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Provost. Just for clarification. Based on responses to me or based on questions to me about playing football and not teams, but I think it's Natasha's question is about social football. I got notification, what's this, Thursday, yesterday from Inverclyde Leisure that they are in fact allowing groups of individuals, if you like, to come together to play socially on the Astro Park and they indeed are taking bookings on that. They do have some, well quite a lot of regulations. And it is that the person who makes the booking has to list all of the players who are going to be involved. They are not, they come, you know, to use the terminology used for the pool, Gurkirk Pool. They come football ready. They're not allowed to use changing rooms or toilets. And basically they can't come in cars together. But they are allowed to play maximum of one and a half hours. So, you know, Inverclyde Leisure have interpreted the regulations in that format. So, you know, as far as clarification is concerned, the bookings for Battery Park Astro Grass right now socially are through the roof. In fact, the people who wrote to me can't get bookings because so many other people have already taken advantage of it. So I think it would be very beneficial to do a double check on what is allowed and what's not allowed. But clearly, I believe that they can take casual bookings for use on the Astro Grass pitch. And it's not from teams, it's from groups of guys who basically will be playing for amusement and hopefully amusing anyway, and to keep fit. So just sort of throw that in. Thanks.
Thanks Ronnie. These are the really granular issues now. It working down to what is happening on the ground. Martin, could you elucidate on that and what Ronnie was saying?
I think I think councillor Alfield is correct and I think also I think an earlier correct. I would just like to double check it against the First Minister's statement of today, just to make sure that that is still the case. But my understanding had been that those type of games were allowed under the under the lifting of restrictions that also allowed the likes of the gyms to open. So we just, my understanding or my expectation would be that that isn't affected by today's statement, but I would just like to see that in black and white and confirm to members.
Provost, could I ask a question please?
Who's speaking?
Jim MacLeod.
Oh Jim, sorry. I was looking around at the pictures and the video images and I couldn't see you. That's because you're fucking kidding. You should have told me that. Right, thanks Jim. Ronnie go.
Yes, it's in relation to football and Ronnie's already touched on the matter. I've been contacted yesterday. Martin should know this. I forwarded it on to to Scott Allen and to David McCorkendale and to I think to Martin as well. Regarding, we're seeing the pitch higher again at Battery Park and at Parkley. The person that contacted me had concerns about not being able to access changing facilities and toilets. I can understand the changing facilities, there are issues there. But how do we get around the issue of toilets when you've got numbers of people who will be training for training or playing a game for, as we've been told, an hour and a half? It's a natural thing to need the toilet, particularly with youngsters as well. And there's not always that possibility to jump in a car and drive home and hold it in over that length of time. What, how are we going to cope with the issue if people start desperately needing a toilet in there after you and urinate near the park?
Jim, this is a toilet issue, so I'll pass it over to Martin.
So I think here there's a couple of issues that probably intersect. Certainly the issue about access to toilets, we will discuss and there's no issues with discussing those with Inverclyde Leisure. But there is an intersection with the more general issue about how Inverclyde Leisure are opening up facilities and I think there is a report going to on this going to the Policy and Resources Committee, an update on where they are. And that's obviously quite a complicated position, which is probably not appropriate for me to rehearse here. But relates largely to the availability of staff and the costs of what they can do. So separately, I'll certainly, I'm happy to discuss the provision of toilet accommodation at Battery Park and partly within Inverclyde Leisure, but I think I have to appreciate they've got other pressures on their operation. So and it's probably not appropriate for me to take that any further at this point.
Thank you Martin. Jim, are you quite happy with the response?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm hearing Martin's response and I understand it. Obviously it is an issue that will be discussed next week at P and R. And obviously it's something for Inverclyde Leisure to look at and address. But we have seen gyms and we've seen waterfront and Gurkirk Pools opening now and they've got the sum of toilets are open there. My fear is that we're going to get people breaking the law by urinating in public places. Even worse still for us children round about or females and seeing grown men or even little lads, for want of a better word, having a pee up against a bush or a tree or whatever. And we could be seeing the law being broken here.
Okay, thank you Jim. Stephen, councillor McCabe.
I wasn't too well informed Provost. I just put in the chat that the private pitches in Paisley are open for hire, so pitches are available for hire, but not for organised teams at this point in time.
Thank you Stephen. With a comment from councillor Quinn about the football, that seems to have excited quite a lot of debate. Ronnie go, Lynne?
I didn't really want to prolong the toilet debate, but I was just making the point is a lot, the kids, as a parent of a footballer, a small footballer, girl as well, the kids' sessions have been reduced to an hour because we know that there's no changing facilities and there's no toilet facilities. They've to arrive ready, sort of training ready, game ready, and we realise that there's no facilities. But we know that that's the reason the sessions have been reduced to an hour. So I think an hour's plenty to go down and most young bladders can cope that.
So the parents?
To see, I think the kids are just glad to be back, pleased, they don't really care about the toilets, they're glad to be back and back to their football.
First Rebecca, I think you just wanted to say something.
Aye, just regarding the sports, the rates is there also be exception for organised sports and places of worship and for funerals, weddings and civil partnerships. So you can have them, but I think most of them are doing what these Inverclyde Leisure's doing. They're not using the toilets because the toilets have got the water every half hour, an hour in other places and that's to cut it down. So this is what they're finding difficult with and that's where partly the disease is coming from. But that's letting you know that at least there is something there in place and they're like, you know, that's from Monday. Okay, so we're okay with the football, it'll probably be all right then, and any other sport in that way, provided. And they'll be two metres apart.
Thank you Charlie. Derek?
Provost, no, I have nothing to add Provost.
Are there any further questions? If you please use the chat facility. Are there any further questions? I can't see any further questions, so I think we should now turn to the recommendations. Now, I must confess, Gerry, I'm slightly confused about an earlier I mean from Elizabeth and councillor Robertson.
Yes Provost, if I can assist you Provost. As I understand it, the recommendations as requested, these are important powers delegated relevantly to officers so that they may be timiously used. And in addition, councillor Robertson is proposing, if the council is to accept this, that if the powers to give directions are utilised, there will be a report within the Covid update report that goes to P and R or otherwise in writing to the next relevant subsequent meeting of the council for noting Provost. And that would be councillor Robertson's request to be included within the recommendations.
Right. First of all, do we include councillor Robertson's request? Are we agreed on that?
Yeah, I'm with you Provost.
Yep.
In which case Provost, that would be a unanimous approval of the recommendations plus the unanimous recommendation to report back to the council. Thank you Provost.
Now, we all know what the recommendations are, I hope, including that, including the one which was inserted today. Do we agree to the recommendations?
Yes.
I agree.
Thank you, thank you Provost.
Recommendations are agreed and thank you very much ladies and gentlemen, members and officers, you know, that was quite illuminating and actually it dwelled more on the nitty-gritty than it did in the theoretical. Thank you very much. I hope to see you all soon. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Provost.